Let me call to order the May 7, 2025 council meeting, the committee of the whole. And would you kindly rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us start with the 2024 Police Officer of the Year. Chief Markowitz?
Hello.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for, oh, sorry. Better? Thank you, sorry. Thank you so much for being here. I am very pleased to offer this award for Pottstown Police Officer of the Year to Officer Ryan L. Guth for 2024. Officer Guth has been a Pottstown Police Officer since November of 2015, and during that time, sorry, I'm getting old, I can't say it. During that time, Officer Guth has been assigned to the Patrol Division and the Special Operations Unit. He's currently a member of the Montgomery County Drug Task Force and the Montgomery County Major Incident Response Team. Officer Guth is currently assigned to the Special Operations Unit, where he has numerous responsibilities, including attending community events, processing and transporting prisoners, proactive patrols, downtown foot patrols, and addressing calls for service. Many of these duties have caused Officer Guth to switch his schedule on short notice. As a result of his duties, Officer Guth has established positive relationships with many downtown business owners and community residents. Officer Guth's personality and approachable demeanor aid in his style of community policing, which makes business owners and residents feel comfortable speaking with him. Information obtained from the community, along with his proactive patrols, has led to numerous arrests, including selling and possessing illegal narcotics, trespass, disorderly conduct, and active warrant services. During 2024, Officer Guth served more than 70 criminal warrants. He also made more than 40 drug arrests and three illegal firearm arrests. Officer Guth also became a well-known presence in the homeless encampments, where he established working relationships with many members of the unhoused community. Through positive relationships with all community members and his ability to build a rapport with people, Officer Guth has been able to obtain information on crimes and assist in the identification of suspects in criminal investigations. Officer Guth has proven himself to be a productive and exemplary police officer who brings honor to himself, the Pottstown Police Department, and the community in which he serves. Signed by myself as the mayor and Chief Markovich. Congratulations, sir.
Good job. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations.
Let's give him another round of applause.
We are very lucky to have him.
Yes, very well deserved.
I got a little.
I know, right?
Yeah, yeah, nice.
He's walking me home from here.
Oh, dice?
Oh, dice. Long, too.
Next, we have the emergency services chief hand. Anything to add?
Oops. So I did submit my report, but I wanted to let everyone know that the fire department's having a small problem. We used to get 150 smoke detectors from Home Depot and Channel 6, and they discontinued the program. So we're looking for new ways to get these items to the residents of the borough. It's a, we get them all out. We've been out for a couple of months now. So if we're looking for them, we'll try to help if we need to, whichever way we can, but it's a concern. Like I said, my report's on file. Thank you.
Maybe we can talk to Lowe's.
Yeah.
She did. Now, we, our tenure, used a tenure ago.
Yeah.
All right. Infrastructure, Councilor Lewandowski, anything to add?
No, your report's in the packet.
All right. Transportation, Councilor Prosser.
There was not a meeting, but last month's meeting was in the packet.
Ordinance review, while I have you. Economic development, Ms. Lee Clark.
Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor. So some businesses in the news. So for those that aren't aware, Gazza's is closed until May 14th, and they're not on vacation, but they are busy servicing the guests at the PGA Tour of the truest of the pro golf. So that's a pretty big thing for Gazza's and Pottstown to be represented at something that is a national, um, national event. For those of you that get Monco today or Vista today, which is Chester County's paper, or Bucks County today, if you read, it's a daily newsletter that comes out. Hollywood Garage was featured most recently, and really telling the story of how a father started a business here in Pottstown and now has turned it over to his son. His son now has recreated. So it was Wheels in Motion under Nick's dad, and now it's Hollywood Garage. So that was also some good news. From January 1st to March 30th, there were 16 businesses that opened up. Beekeepers Cafe, Pando's Pastry, if anybody has gotten to Pando's Pastry, it is so good. Oh, yes, so good. Right? So is Beekeepers Cafe.
Yes.
Coffee's very good, right? There's a theme here. We're all gonna need to go to Keystone Running and get some running shoes and actually run. Marisol's Bakery and Cafe, Sunset Hill Brewing at 300 East High, Mr. Grill on South Kyne Street, which is across Catty Corner from Jack Cassidy's, Gigi's Design and Essentials, One Car Accessories, Pottstown Braid Style, Miracle Esthetics, LG Glass, Song Solution LLC, The Shop, L. Vulcan. Again, food, but good, very good. Hair on Hanover, Pottstown's own Meek Market on King Street, and Anno Artem, which you can put on those shoes from Keystone Running, and then Wander the Art Gallery, which is over at the Security Plaza, which is a really interesting thing. We continue to have leases available on buildings, commercial buildings, more than we do for sale buildings. So owners, it's almost 50% less. Some are a combination of sale and lease. We are very lucky here in Pottstown with the economic environment that we are in currently, that we have no one style of building or one use of industry. So I think that that's really one of the great benefits of locating here in Pottstown if you're a business, because we do have everything from office buildings to industrial buildings. Speaking of industrial buildings, the industrial complex is 95% complete and close to signing an employer/tenant, which will be 100%. They'll be at 100%. So we hope that continues. Fed on Blanc, we're preparing already for September 12th, even though we haven't hit summer. Fed sponsors to date, we really want to thank them so much. Monstra and Greator, Wolf Baldwin and Associates, Traffic Planning and Design, Schultz Technology Solutions, and Diamond Credit Union. There are many levels of sponsorship available. Now is the time to get them before tickets go on sale, which is June 2nd. So June 2nd, tickets go on sale. We have something a little different this year, which is also there's going to be a car sponsorship. So we will have white cars. No, not your Toyota, and your Toyotas, I'm sure, are lovely, but luxury cars that are out in the street. There is a sponsorship available for that, and we've talked to Jamie Orr and some other folks. We figure that having that layer added, we are a car town here in Pottstown, so. And all of that information can be found on fedonblancpottstown.com.
Good. And while you're there, Land Bank.
Sure, Land Bank. Would love to do that. So let me just find my Land Bank sheet, sorry. Well, I can do this by, I think I can do this by, by now.
Got it.
Eight properties. Since Land Bank has been acquiring properties and selling properties, the Land Bank has been able to move eight properties. There is only one property in its possession still, but it should be going within 30 days to settlement, hopefully to Habitat for Humanity. And the auditors were at the last Land Bank meeting stating that there were no findings, and the Land Bank had a clean audit. So all very positive things, I think, for such a small local land bank. They do amazing work, and they are all to be congratulated. It's a, it's a little complicated, the work that is done. So for people to really get in and to understand it, it takes a lot on their part to commit to being on that particular committee. So we appreciate all of their service. And the last thing that I will say about Land Bank is, I know that sometimes there's frustration that there aren't more properties coming up, but the way, the two most common ways land banks get properties are sheriff sale and donation. And we have already received confirmation that there will be no properties coming up for sheriff sale in August, which means, and excuse me, judicial sale, right? So it's not that initial sheriff sale, it's a judicial sale. And after that, there is usually a continuance. But if logic follows, there won't be any continuance of a sale, there's no properties in August. So there won't even be properties in December. So that's the good news, bad news thing. People have purchased a lot of properties in Pottstown, turned them around. There's a lot of residential individuals that want to live here and move here because you can get a lot of house compared to the rest of the county for your money, and some really beautiful homes that might need just a little bit of work. So the other thing, the other way that the Land Bank can get properties is through donation. So I would encourage anybody that if you're talking to your neighbors or you see a blighted property, and a blighted, man, I'm sorry, I'm gonna pay an attorney again, blighted, the definition of blighted is unoccupied, correct? Thank you. So unoccupied. So if your neighbor is sloppier than you, that's not blighted, right? So blighted is unoccupied, and if you see it and you know it, that it's a long-term thing, if you happen to know who we can get in touch with, we will write a letter and ask them to please donate it to Land Bank, which they may be happy to, if it's an air situation, that they don't even live in this state, they might be happy to do so. Might be beneficial. That's my report for Land Bank.
Thank you. And from Human Relations, Ms. Levin.
Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor and Council President. May is Asian and Pacific Islander and Jewish American Heritage Month. We'd like to recognize the contributions and influence of the Asian and Pacific Islander Americans to the history, culture, and achievements of the United States. We also would like to recognize the achievements, traditions, heritage, and contributions of Jewish Americans in our community. The head of the Catholic Church, Pope Francis, passed away on April 21st, 2025. His death and election process of a successor has set many rituals and ceremonies of the church in place. This gives us an opportunity to learn about Catholicism. Mother's Day, a day to recognize mothers, motherhood, and maternal bonds in general, is this Sunday, May 11th. And Monday, May 26th, is Memorial Day. It's for remembering and honoring persons who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces. And a parade here in Pottstown will start at Goodwill Fire Company at 10:00 a.m., followed by a ceremony on Veterans Island at 11:00 a.m. at Memorial Park. The Commission's May meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 13th, at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers. You all are invited to attend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And from the library, Joseph here. I don't see him.
I don't see him.
Okay. Ricketts Community Center, Councilor Kirkland, anything to add?
CPR classes, Tuesdays and Thursdays, from 10:00 to 12:00. Call the number for more information, 484-945-1020. Also, she wanted me to announce that a church is having a service there, New Life Pottstown with Pastor Anthony, starting on Mother's Day at 10:30 a.m. Thank you.
And from the school district, Councilor Lindsay.
So on April, was that the 29th? Yes, April 29th, there was a town hall meeting for fair funding and taxes. Stephanie was there and myself. It was at the Tri-County Adult Center. I put some, I put some literature, it's in the packet, so if you just download that information. It was just basically telling us that we still at the same place, guys, with the lack of funding for education. So it was informational, and not only was Pottstown there, but Pottsgrove was also there. So it's not just us, it's Pottsgrove, too. So if you, when you have a moment, take a look at the paperwork, and if you have any questions or concerns, you can always give me a call or email. My information is on the borough site. That's it for me.
Okay, and we'll hear from the mayor on Monday, so.
I have a proclamation.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to present this proclamation for Public Service Recognition Week. In honor of the millions of public employees at the federal, state, county, and local levels, whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, and county and local levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working, and whereas public employees take not only jobs, but oaths, and whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, border patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives each day in the service of the people of the United States and around the world, and whereas public servants include teachers, doctors, and scientists, train conductors and astronauts, nurses and safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, and social workers, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Therefore, I, Stephanie A. Henrick, Mayor of the Borough of Pottstown, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set here, set seal here, to that on May 4th through May 10th of 2025 is Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and local. And in the interest of time, if it would be okay if I give my report, Madam Mayor, a report on Monday?
Yes.
Yeah.
Fine. The manager's report.
Yes, good evening, everyone. And as the mayor mentioned, it is Public Service Recognition Week, and I just want to personally recognize and thank all the public sector employees in the borough, who I've seen their dedication, their professionalism, every day to really keep our community running smoothly. And I really appreciate each and everyone's contribution. A lot of times, it's behind the scenes, and there's a lot of things that we're doing that not everyone sees, right? But they're out there, they're working for the community every day, and we deeply appreciate the jobs that they do. Couple other updates. So last month, the School of River Passenger Rail Authority was in Pottstown for its board meeting, where DVRPC gave an overview of work that's just getting started on the station area concept plan that would support the regional rail initiative, or the passenger rail initiative, I should say. While we're still very much in the early stages of that project, it is an important step in preparing the borough for the return of passenger rail. And presently, they are in the process of conducting stakeholder interviews with various entities in the community. And this plan will look at the train station design with a couple key elements. So it'll look at the potential for a train station location, the concept design for the station itself, so looking at things like vehicular access, pedestrian circulation, things of that nature. It'll also look at adjacent parcels and potential development opportunities there, as well as zoning considerations to support transit-oriented development. So we'll be sure to keep everyone updated as the plan progresses, and some of you will be reaching out to as well, probably to do an interview with, and they'll be at a council meeting at some point to present their concept, draft concept plan for everyone to take a look at. On the grant front, we did get a PICO Green Region grant for 7,500. That was secured for the replanting of trees in Riverfront Park. So that'll help us revegetate that area after we had to take several trees down due to the ashbore invasive insect, causing safety concerns in that area. As some of you probably ran into this week, the Hanover Street Railroad crossing is currently closed. This is for a crossing repaving work to make a more smooth transition over the tracks. This is expected to go on until Friday. So there's a chance that they could be done a little bit earlier, but at this point, they're thinking that it'll take them the whole week to get that finished. A couple paving updates. So PICO and the authority have now completed most of their paving work related to the underground pipe replacements that occurred last year in 2024. And now PICO is in the process of starting gas main replacement work along the Evans Street corridor between Beach and South Street, and a couple of cross streets there. So that'll be ongoing for the next couple of months, and then they'll move over to the South Roland Street area around Rupert Elementary School. But they're trying to time that for when, after the school start, or after the school ends for the year. And lastly, we were informed by Lower Pottsgrove that there will be a lane shift on High Street at Sunnybrook for emergency bridge repair work. So it's expected that this will last about two months. So both lanes will remain open, it's just that there'll be, I think, one 10-foot lane and one 11-foot lane that'll pass through that busy corridor. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Business Improvement District, I think.
Yes, so I can start off with that. So what I just want to do is kind of briefly just refresh everyone's memory on the bid notification and objection process. So as required by the Bid Act, all property owners, unless these within the proposed business improvement district, were notified by regular mail in February. In addition to the required mailings, the borough went beyond statutory requirements by also posting notices on all the affected properties. And there are sworn affidavits completed to confirm that these notifications were carried out. The Bid Act outlines a 45-day objection period for property owners to submit written objections. This period ran from March 10th to April 24th, and only the property owners are eligible to submit objections. Lesses do not qualify to vote, and verbal comments at meetings, while an important part of the dialogue for this discussion, do not count towards the vote tally. Likewise, the Bid Act does not recognize affirmative yes or yes votes, so they're immaterial to the tabulation. So again, to block the formation of the bid, written objections must be received by 40% of the property owners. Regarding the Pottstown bid vote tally results, we received 52 qualified letters of objection, bringing the total objections to 17.6% in the proposed bid assessment area. So since the number of objections received falls below the 40% threshold required by the Bid Act to defeat the initiative, the process to establish the bid may continue if council desires. And I'm gonna turn it over to Matt, where he can explain kind of the next steps that we would need to take legally if council would wish to move forward with this initiative.
Thank you, Justin. As Justin noted, because the members of the potential bid did not veto the creation of the bid, it proceeds to council at this point. You have the option of establishing the bid if you want to. In order to do that, you're going to need to create an ordinance, or adopt an ordinance, which creates the bid itself, as well as enter into an agreement with the bid for the management of the bid itself. Attached to the agenda this evening are two documents, a draft set of bylaws, and a draft agreement, which will be between the bid and the borough. It's my understanding these documents have been posted and available since February on paid's website. As council considers whether to proceed and how to proceed, I strongly encourage you to review those documents, because it includes vital information, such as information related to the Board of Directors for the bid, including the size of the board, as well as the membership of the board. Generally, the types of issues that you want to consider, if you want to proceed, are going to be the membership of that board. It's going to be the initial length of the creation of the bid. By statute, if you proceed with creating the bid, you have to do so for a minimum of five years. However, you can initially create it for longer than that period, as well as you're entitled to extend it at the end of whatever the initial period is. Additionally, the issue of collecting the assessments for any unpaid assessments to the bid, it's my understanding that the borough, what's contemplated for the borough's role will simply be actually filing the liens with the court. The bid will be responsible for all procedures related to the assessments itself, including all required notices, preparing the liens for filing, and then after filing, handling any execution on the liens, as well as reimbursing the borough for their expenses. If council wants to proceed, again, your next steps would be authorizing the solicitor to prepare and advertise an ordinance to create the bid, as well as to authorize a preparation of an agreement for the management of the bid.
Any questions?
No, I sent a letter to council and Justin and Peggy with my concerns and my issue with all of the feedback that we've got in opposition to this. It could have been done in a different way to gain support, so council wouldn't have to make a decision like this.
Anyone else?
Yeah. What I want to say is, is that the concept of a bid is basically the same as Craft Co. Management manages the malls, okay? They were created in the 70s to help the downtowns compete against the malls, which provided a safe, clean, marketed, well-marketed place in which people would feel safe. And also also help with Capitol Improvements facade, that kind of stuff. It's a good thing. It is a good thing in itself. Additionally, we, there was an opportunity for people to complain, and we heard what the results were. They had the power to stop this. What that means is that there was a vast majority of the people, or who either like it or don't care enough to respond, either one. Now, you take those things, a good thing that didn't have enough to overturn or take it away from us, so it's a good thing. Now, what I am concerned about is that, is that this good thing was marketed very poorly, so that there are so many people that are complaining about this, far short of the required amount, but they are complaining about this. So I will say that I am in support of the bid for these reasons, but I also will say that, and you know this to be accurate, I will guarantee that I make sure that a better job is done of managing the downtown and making sure that the bid does what they're supposed to do than they did selling the concept of the bid. I think it's a good thing. I think the people, either, for the majority of them, support it, but I do think that they should welcome oversight from someone who can be a pain in the neck, and that would be me, or anybody who wants to. But if people are going to pay more, they're going to get more, and it's not going to be okay. It's not going to be pedo all over again. So that's my two cents squared, or whatever.
So now I feel the need to read my letter.
You can write one up right now, so you can.
Yeah. It's going to take me a minute to get there, so I can read it at the end. I was hoping to not have to do that, but I don't disagree with you, and I just need to get into my email, because there was some really good points in there. The bid is a good thing, right? But there was not buy-in. I've walked these streets. I went in and talked to business owners. Not one was for this, not one. Bring me one, and I can vote for this. One small business owner. Instead, developers and people with a lot of money were paraded through here. That doesn't sell me. I live in the repercussions of votes and developers and things that were changed and shouldn't be that way. So to hear the only people that are for this, that have come forward, or that I've tried to seek out, are people with a lot of money, are people that haven't shown up here, are people that don't live here, and that's a problem. There was an opportunity here. Instead of going after all the investors, going after our small businesses, bringing them together, and if you're not getting them by an email, go to them, bring them together, hear what they are saying. To me, I was looking for a reason to support this, and when it came through the first time, I was hoping after hearing people speak about this, that when it came back, it would be different, it would be laid out better. It wasn't. And when questions were asked by our small business owners, it felt like they were very dismissed, and the answers were exasperated. And it feels like they're being told what to do, and that we know better, and we don't know better. And I think it's a disservice to, I don't have a better word for this, to shove it down people's throats, then put it on the borough to put a lien against the businesses or on the property, and then we're going to have that fight. That doesn't seem like a really smart way to go about this. It needs to go back, and it needs to start over again, and it needs to be marketed better, and concern needs to be given to people that don't have a lot of money. And I want to see small business owners come in here and support it. I don't want to make this decision, and I shouldn't have to. The buy-in should have been from our business community. That's who should be having meetings, that's who should be talking, not us. So I will read my letter at the end as soon as I get my email.
Anyone else? All right, we'll list it for Monday to see which way it goes.
And I will say too, Councilman Andy, to, sure, Councilman Andy, to take the pressure off too, this will be listed for discussion Monday evening, if that's easier.
Okay, then I'll read it on Monday. Actually, I'll print it out.
Twelve is the Daughters of American Revolution.
All right, so we have a really interesting design that was proposed by the Daughters of American Revolution for a Revolutionary War memorial on Veterans Island in Memorial Park. So this is the image that you're seeing up here on the, on the screen. It would be a stone with some reliefs and then a large plaque in the middle. We feel that staff feels the design is elegant and fitting for what they're trying to achieve. That's the other side of it, and just in time for our next celebration for America for the two-fiftieth. So we think it's, could be executed in fairly short order, and the DAR would undertake the fundraising and the execution of the monument. We think it'll be about thirty thousand dollars, and all they would need is approval from council to proceed with those efforts, and they would be working in concert with Parks and Rec in terms of where it would be sited exactly on Veterans Island. But Parks and Rec has reviewed the design, and they're strongly in favor with authorizing them to move forward. So if you have any comments on that, let us know, and otherwise, we can list it for consideration on Monday night.
Yes. Please do. Okay, an agreement, Borough of Pottstown and Greater Pottstown Tennis.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is an agreement that we had originally back in two thousand and nineteen, if you recall, and it gives limited access rights to the tennis courts, to Greater Pottstown Tennis and Learning. And in exchange for that, the organization improved the borough courts at Maple Street Park with new paving, striping, surfacing, fencing, and other amenities. The public does have access to the court as well during certain hours, and we've been reviewing some of our agreements, and we found that this one was actually out of date in two thousand and twenty-three, but since the time, it's been an amicable and beneficial arrangement for the borough. We've been honoring the agreement regardless, but to make it official, there is an option under the original agreement for a five-year extension, and the director of the association did reach out and ask us if we could renew this agreement for another five years under the same terms and condition. And that would take it out until two thousand and twenty-eight, then at that point, and then there would be one more option to renew it for another five-year term in two thousand and twenty-eight.
Okay. Be good. No objections, we'll list that for Monday. And never agreeing to... Mr. Hovey.
Yes, thanks. The, the borough was approached by RBus Inc. to fill the gap in service that resulted when Amtrak stopped the bus route from Redding into Philadelphia. RBus Inc. is what's known as a transportation broker. They are seeking a license from the borough, which will be for initial two years, and then can be renewed for a year, on a yearly basis thereafter. The payment would be two hundred dollars per month, and essentially, they'd be looking to license the bus, bus stop shelter located at fifty-one South Hanover Street, as well as the parking lot, which I'll note is, named as the Charles W. Dickinson Transportation Center. And I note that because Mr. Dickinson is here with us this, this evening. And again, this would, would fill the gap in service that was left by Amtrak. So unless there's any objection, we'll list this for Monday evening for action.
Objections, we'll list it. Okay. Purchase Transportation.
Yes, so every five years, we're required by the FTA to go out to bid for provision of our fixed route and paratransit service for motor transportation here in the borough. And as you know, the borough contracts with an operator to provide these, these services. We don't run the transit system ourselves, we merely manage it. So this RFP sought cost proposals for qualified bidders for the five-year period, and Part Inc. was the only bidder. That being said, I think that what they're proposing in the contract seems reasonable. It's a four percent increase from the previous contract, and a two to three percent increase then each year thereafter until the end of the five-year period.
Okay.
So if there's any questions, it's attached, the full proposal's attached to your agenda. Let us know.
Otherwise, list it for Monday. Sixteen is the local match for Part.
And similarly, this is how we pay for the Part service, so this is requesting a local match resolution for Part for fiscal years twenty-five and twenty-six, and this would certify the local match for the state operating financial assistance. So we get, most of our operating system comes through the state, and then the remaining percentage is matched by Montgomery County and Chester County. And then the, anything that's not covered by that is covered by federal funds. So the borough really doesn't contribute its own dollars, just its, its staff resources towards the operation of the bus service.
Any new questions, we'll list that one. Seventeen is the Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Grant.
Yeah, so we are moving forward with additional funding for future arch rehabilitation projects in line with the priority repairs noted in the two thousand and nineteen stormwater arch study. So we have priorities in how we're addressing these arches, because we have about, you know, thirty million in essentially improvements that we need to make over the next ten years or so. And the first priority is to address recent collapses. The second is to address priority repairs under structures. And the third is to address priority repairs under roadways. So with, with the arch culverts now complete at Forty-two Wallna and twelve-hundred High, the first two priority repair categories have now been addressed. So the third phase will turn to the third priority repair area underneath roadways. So for this grant, we were seeking five hundred thousand from PA Small Water and Sewer to be used for the Farmington Avenue storm culvert replacement and inlets at four sixty-one North York Street. There's a fifteen percent match on this, which would be about seventy-five thousand dollars, and that match would come from the borough's capital budget, line items that are set aside for this each year.
Okay. We'll list that one. And on grants, the flood mitigation grant?
Yes, and this is similar, just a different program. We're also applying for five hundred thousand to be used for stormwater rehabilitation. We're still determining which location would be best for this grant. In addition to the priority areas that we discussed under roadways, we also, a fourth priority is then to conduct ongoing maintenance. So part of this grant, if successful, could include, include some ongoing maintenance to prevent the archways that are in decent shape now from deteriorating further.
Okay. Good, we'll list that one. Okay, Schuylkill River Sojourn would like Alcatraz.
Yes, June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, that would be in the evening after they arrive here.
Okay, list that. And who's this? Oh, a beer garden for the Pottstown Rumble.
Yep.
Do that again?
Yep, this is there for the dates listed.
Okay, list that one. Street closure request for Ambucks Soapbox Derby?
Yes, so this is an amended date. They had, we had approved this before, but
We did.
They're now amending their date to June thirteenth and fourteenth, and the rain date of June fifteenth, and they'll have a nice newly paved roadway that just got paved by PICO.
That's right.
So it should be good.
Okay, no objections there? Yeah, we'll list that. And for the Fourth of July, Pottstown River, he wants it closed?
Yeah, so it would be ten-thirty a.m., the parade would start, and it would run from High Street, on High Street, from Manatani
Adams to Manatani.
To Adams, yeah.
Okay, we'll do that one. Other street request for Juneteenth?
So Juneteenth is holding a community worship service this year in Smith Family Plaza. As a part of that, they would like to close High Street in, in front of that location between Hanover and York.
Okay, no objections, so we'll do that one.
And that's an all-day closure, one to seven p.m.
And for Halloween?
Hobart's Run and the Hill School are sponsoring and running the Halloween parade this year on October twenty-fifth. It'll be four to six p.m. with a rain date of October twenty-sixth, and this will have the, a similar parade route Madison to Manatani.
Very good. We'll do that one. Twenty-five, Mr. Hovey, a letter requesting state legislation.
Yes, this relates to a topic we discussed at Lank last year, and more specifically, sober living homes. If you recall, a sober living home is a supportive home, family-style environment for individuals who are in active recovery from drug and alcohol protection. Those individuals are protected by the American with Disabilities Act, and sober living homes, which are run properly, are tremendously helpful for these individuals to establish their sobriety as they transition usually out of a treatment center back into society. Unfortunately, though, the protections that are afforded to them often give the operators of these facilities the ability to operate outside of normal zoning restrictions and, you know, essentially can pack a house with as many people as possible, charging each of them for rent that makes it much higher than what standard rent would be in a community. And this is a vulnerable population, and so you see situations, you know, where individuals are taken advantage of and, you know, can be thrown out on the street for not complying with, you know, what that operator, you know, wants them to do, which then, you know, can perpetuate the problem and put them even deeper into their, their addiction issues. To try to address this issue, Pennsylvania, I think about two or three years ago at this point, time's running quick, adopted a voluntary licensing program for sober living homes. It was more of a carrot than a stick. Essentially, the law that went into place restricted sober living homes from receiving placements from any government-funded treatment facility. Essentially, then, if some, if, if an operator did not have a license, they'd have to rely on referrals from some other source. Sometimes, as organizations are church-based, maybe they rely on word of mouth, you know, referrals from past individuals who stayed there. What we're seeing, at least in the borough, is that only a small number of the sober living homes that are in existence here actually went ahead and got licensed. And the licensing programs we covered is quite extensive and really does a lot for establishing the standard to make sure that these are run properly. It's my understanding that Pade is attempting to get stakeholders together and is requesting that they issue a letter of support to our elected officials to try and encourage them to expand that regulating, that licensing program to cover all sober living homes, and essentially make it a mandatory program rather than a voluntary program. So the, the request would be authorization to prepare and issue a letter, you know, advocating for a change in those regulations.
Good. Let's list that for Monday. Upcoming board vacancies on the Human Relations Commission. There's a one-four-year term to expire May eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, and we have a Mr. Charles. Comments from citizens?
All right, first up, we have Brian Hyde here, please.
Good evening. I would like to comment on what's happening downtown with the businesses. I was encouraged by Meg's report on the new business. I meet some of these people through my business, and listening to some of the comments made by the counselors on the bid program, especially about the larger or more affluent investors that are coming in here and buying up larger properties and putting money into them, only thing I would like to say only thing I would like to say is that those investors are making a big dent in some of the vacancies in Pottstown, and as small business owners, I think they would like to see the bigger investors come in and bring more people into town. Um, obviously, there's towns around us that are doing well, downtown areas, and I, we need a starting point. Bid, I believe, is it. Start small, and you can't jump on running, but with Council Andrew also said, you know, there, there's stuff we should be doing, but I think bid's a great start, and we have to build up from there and with oversight and, you know, better management, I should say. We can't do it overnight, but we have to start somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Ron Williams, please.
Really? Next?
Yeah.
I thought there was a whole list?
No, you're it.
Good evening. Uh, my first comment is that, uh, I really want to thank this, uh, this council. You've been supportive of just about anything that we've, we've pursued, uh, not only myself but, uh, folks that I work with around town, small businesses. And, uh, I'm very proud to be a part of this community and to have this council where, sitting where you're sitting, making the decisions you need to make. It's not easy. We had a great weekend this weekend. Our, our powwow, I, I mean, I had folks calling me a week and a half ago saying, "Oh, you're gonna, uh, cancel the powwow because you got bad weather coming your way," and I'm like that. Well, they don't know me. I don't trust weathermen, but I, 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 I trust my gut, and my gut said, uh, we'll all work our way through it. It's, 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 it's a native, uh, uh, cultural act, uh, act to, to look at the weather and say, "We can deal with that." Uh, Saturday was one of the biggest e- event days that we've ever had. Didn't have as many vendors as I would have liked because they all, a lot of them got scared off, but the vendors we did have, uh, contacted me after the powwow and said they did very well. Our community and the communities around us have surrounded, have, have, have supported everything that we've done, and, uh, my favorite mayor showed up, uh, John Armato, Evan Brant, thank you for the coverage that you did, uh, on the powwow, and, uh, we're, we're, we're not going to go away. Folks have tried to get rid of the indigenous community for two hundred years, and we're still here, and we're still how, celebrating, uh, our relationship with one another. We may not always agree with one another, but, uh, I, I love you guys, and, uh, I just wanted to come and thank you. Uh, two other little things I just wanted to mention. We've got racetracks around this town. I cannot believe how, uh, disconcerned a lot of our citizens are about the kind of traffic that they encourage or behavior that they encourage. That's, I, I don't want to come in and blame anybody, and I think our police department does a great job. I wish we had the resources to have a larger safety community. Um, you know, people going through red lights and, 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 and driving on the, uh, uh, closed, enclosed areas of, of, of the roadways. Uh, I'm a twenty-five miler. I respect the twenty-five mile speed limit, and I get saluted by people passing me up all the time. Don't know if it's something to be, you know, proud of or not, but, uh, I, 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 I'm disappointed that our community, that a lot of folks in the community, and can we get rid of motorcycles? That's it. Thank you. The motor scooters, the electric motor scooters are driving me crazy, but that's, that's something for, that's something for our friends back there to think about. Thank you so much.
You're here.
And by the way, our police department is one of the greatest police, uh, units I've ever participated in.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay, from the citizens. From the councilors. Councilor Kirkland?
Anything?
Counselor Maustra?
We also had a great weekend, too. Um, there's another great thing that happened. We had a little garden party at Edgewood Cemetery, and about thirty-five people came, came in, came out. They worked together, it, and we got a lot of things done, and, and it, and the cemetery's looking wonderful, and it's a tribute to the Pottstown community. It's a tribute to the Pottstown community.
Yeah.
To, to get together, see a problem, get together, and throw pennies into a jar until we collect two million of them, and then we are, have enough to cl- to, um, cut the grass. And, and we really appreciate that. And speaking of the penny collections, uh, on the May seventeenth, there is a, the other Living History Tour there that has many, that has several sets of tickets available, many in fact, and we would appreciate if you came out and learned about the Brunish people who were buried there and all kinds of other historical people who were buried in this town, done in a Living History Tour. It helps us raise those two million pennies, okay, that we need. Thank you.
Counselor Linsky? Anything?
I have nothing.
Okay.
What? I pay.
Counselor Webbedinsky?
Nothing.
Counselor Vanny?
Yep. So first, I'm going to start with the, the good stuff, and then I'll read my letter. Um, I want to give a huge shout-out to Hollywood Garage. I was in an accident not that long ago. They took care of my car. Not only did they repair it perfectly, my car has not been this clean since twenty twenty. They cleaned everything. None of it was involved in the accident. That's just how they work. They are honest, they are upfront, they work with you. Nick, the owner, is amazing. I'm so glad that this business stayed here. Um, when I first drove by, I didn't think they were for regular people and regular cars, but they do everything from brakes, changing your tires, to fixing your car when you're in an accident. So if you need anything done, go visit them. Um, now I'm not going to say the name right. Pandos? Yes, the bakery. Um, I was on a walk, because I walk almost every night. I made a mistake, and I stopped in there because they're open till six, and they had little cookies. I guess they're like shortbread with the raspberry and apricot in the middle. I forget what they're called, but what are they? Thumb, thank you, the thumbprint cookies. I took them home. I bit into it. They were baked perfectly. The bottoms were a golden color. They were beautiful. I also got a cannoli, a rigatta cheese cannoli. It was delicious. I'm going to go buy them and take them home to my families. Um, the other thing, this isn't, oh, El Vulcan. I went there. Um, I've been there twice now. The first time I went, I wanted to sit outside and have a margarita. They were open, but they weren't ready, but they let me do that, and it was beautiful to be able to sit outside, have a nice drink, and watch our town. It was, it was lovely. So our downtown is doing really well. Um, also, this is not, oh, um, our walk signs. We talk about the traffic and the racetrack. Um, I stopped people, and I said, "Can we wait for the walk sign?" Oh, they don't work, and they're right. If you walk around town, there's, I've brought this up several times, somebody needs to go take a walk and hit the buttons. Some you can't hear, some you'll stand there till tomorrow, some work beautifully. Um, so I think we need to work together with the cars and the pedestrians and get those signs fixed. Um, now for my letter. So I wrote this today, and I was hoping to not have to read it, but I will. This is to Peggy and Justin, and I said, "I feel it's important to be clear about my perspective on the bid proposal. Throughout the discussions, I've noticed that small businesses, the very ones this is supposed to help, don't seem to have a strong voice of support. I have received phone calls, made phone calls, and walked through town, speaking directly with business owners." Hold on, I can't see it too well. Not all, not one has expressed support. Meanwhile, we continue to hear about backing from large investors. That's concerning. While investors are certainly important, that should never come at the expense of a small business that are the backbone of our community. I really wanted to get behind the bid, but lack of meaningful engagement with small businesses made that difficult from the start. The way this was marketed did not generate the kind of buy-in needed from all parties, and that was a missed opportunity. My stance may have been different if, from the beginning, there had been a genuine effort to engage small business and encourage their support alongside of that of investors, but that hasn't been the case, and the lack of visible support from local business owners speaks volumes. The bid is supposed to help, but instead, these conversations have created tension, distrust, and angst among the very people it's meant to serve. There is so much distrust, and I understand that. Decisions like this have real impact on people who live here and have small businesses here. It's different when you can leave and go home somewhere else. For those of us that live here, these outcomes are part of our daily lives. Most of the people I spoke with aren't necessarily against the idea of a bid. They'd be open to it if it were laid out transparently and if they felt included in the process rather than being told what's good for them. I have been listening carefully, trying to find something in the bid that I could stand behind. So far, I haven't heard anything that addresses the current concerns I've had or the concerns shared with me by small business owners who have reached out or have spoke to directly. Some of the questions that have come up in those conversations include, "What exactly are the benefits of the bid, specifically to the businesses, not in general, but specific examples of services they will receive? What is the process for selecting a board? Will there be a job posting and interview process? What are the requirements for that position, and what justifies the proposed salary? These are reasonable questions that deserve clear answers, and the lack of clarity around them has only added to the hesitation and mistrust. These questions have been asked, but each time, the responses seem unclear and exasperated, which only deepens the disconnect. I feel it's unfair that the burden of, of opposing the bid has fallen on the shoulders of small businesses. If this proposal truly benefited them, their support would be more visible and organic. I also want to acknowledge that I missed a meeting with Peggy and Justin that was offered in case I had any questions. I was unable to attend, but I want to be clear, that meeting and meetings like it should not be with me or any other councilperson. They should be with the business owners. You should not have to sell this idea to council. If the bid had clearly been laid out from the beginning with more collaboration and genuine engagement with the business community, council wouldn't need to be convinced because the businesses would already be on board."
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Pross.
Well, the May, May meeting, I always report on that, uh, for fifteen years, I've been taking my wife for anniversary of her first day to Juan Carlos, although we had to make a little changes here, went to El Vulcan instead. It was delicious, actually. It was good. Instead of the, uh, sea fish lot, I got a good carne ala tabacanha.
Good.
Recommend it.
Here.
I just want to say, last weekend was fantastic. If you didn't come out in town, it was packed. I, I'm sorry, I did not get to over to the Edgewood Cemetery cleanup, um, next time, I promise, um, but it was great, and I'm so glad, like, the powwow was just fantastic. Saturday was a beautiful day. It really held out the rain, um, for everyone, and the car show, um, like, it's, it's getting to be summer, people, so Pottstown, everyone's out and about, new businesses are open. Please come downtown and enjoy, um, and...
Slow down.
Ron, and what?
Slow down.
Oh, yes, please, slow down. If I could get a, like, from the Incredibles, like, one of those bubble, like, radar kind of things to, in case the cars that are speeding, that would be fantastic, but, uh, I don't think that exists. Um, but thank you all, Ron, thank you again. Beautiful, and, uh, the vendors in here absolutely love them.
Good. Thank you all. Meeting adjourned.